...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Nice balmy morning in December. We've got a motion to approve the agenda.
Um, so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approve the minutes from eleven twenty-seven.
I would make the motion after looking them over to approve the minutes.
Second. First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to general public concerns.
Kathy Mead is here. We wanted to bring to you and make you aware and ask if you would be interested in being involved. We decided we would like to do a charity for the Christmas season and we chose bikes for type. It's the Ford Dodge Ford and they represent Webster, Wright, Humboldt, and Hamilton County. We were gonna visit with Edmo about doing a jean day on each Thursday in December for five bucks. We would like the members that participate to pay their five dollars in advance so we can get the deadline is December twelfth to get the money to the Edmo office. And we were looking to get some certificates for Humboldt County kids that need them Christmas. So we just wanted to make you aware and let you know that you're sure welcome to participate. We're gonna have signs in our office explaining why we are on an odd day wearing jeans and hopefully if any other customers would like to participate, we can twist their arm a little bit and get some Christmas cheer for the underprivileged in Humboldt County.
I think the other night at our Edmo meeting, she asked if Rick Rasmussen usually takes his trailer down and then they'll bring the bikes back through Humboldt County, the ones that are designated. We can designate for the kids that have apps here.
Yeah.
So our money would stay in Humboldt.
Okay.
The other thing was is, I think he said, I'm not sure if the number, but it's like a hundred and some, over a hundred requests for, with all the counties.
Just for all the counties?
No, just for all the counties.
Oh, okay.
So Rick says, well, I better bring my bigger trailer. But I know that there's been quite a few for Humboldt.
We thought when we got our funds together, we'd see about getting a picture for the paper too, just to let everybody know that.
Yeah, it'd be nice. Good plan.
Done this and just thought we'd run it by you and let you know and.
Go for it. That's a great thing you're doing.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Honey, what else?
Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Morning, Gary.
Jerry West, I had talked to you guys before about.
I'm betting my pasties are on here, right?
Yeah, you can't. I need to keep going, so. I wanna clear up some misconceptions. It has, I gather, been construed that the Cassoot County regs are anti-wind. And I think that's actually, that's not right. They're an attempt by that county board to establish reasonable guidelines that would cover what would happen in commercial wind development in their county. They set boundaries that protect all the citizens and do not prevent reasonable development. If you wanna see regs that, to make sure there aren't any, I can show you regs that guarantee there aren't any. I cautioned you before about not end up like, mess like Palo Alto County. The front thing I gave you is the lawsuit that was filed in Palo Alto County against the board supervisor. The second one I gave you is actually a thing that kinda lays out what all's going on in this part of Iowa as far as stuff against commercial wind development. It's not an easy or quick project to fix these, the reg. The other thing I'm not sure you guys are aware of is how much money a project creates in production tax credit for developers. Depending on the size, and most of them are now in Iowa and going up, they're over a hundred terms. You're talking about between a hundred and fifty and two hundred and fifty million dollars in production tax credit for any project over the ten years of the production tax credit. That is going to bring considerable pressure on you. Much of that, with that much money there, you're gonna have commercial paid lobbyists out of the woodwork. And I would caution you to be very suspicious of experts that have, are getting paid by vested interests. This whole thing is really about nothing more than that number, a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty million dollars. The rest of this all stuff is just smoke. What the county would make out of one of these things is, you know, is chicken feet. And you tack it up against two hundred and fifty million dollars. You have sworn responsibility for no health, safety, and comfort, general welfare of the present and future residents of the county and protect property values throughout the county. That calls for each of you to exercise due diligence, become very familiar with the issues created by wind development. The last page that I gave you is about one up south of Sioux Falls that has been fighting about for two or three years and they turned reasons back. I gave you a copy of a book by Greg Kudner on that subject to help bring you up to speed. My question is, have you read it? Each of you has to look in the mirror and decide if you're going to step up, protect all the residents, or do nothing and regret it forever.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Jan, would you like to come up? We have Jan Thompson from the Rennwick Little Library.
You watch money. Not lie.
No, I'm not. A little bit.
Well, we really appreciate it, although you're supporting all the public libraries. They're pretty important in our county. But, you know, prices do go up, books are going up every day, technology is changing all the time. And of course, the state got cut, so the state libraries are cutting the funding that they give for libraries. So we're just grateful that you guys are supporting us and we're just asking for a five percent raise again. We really appreciate it.
How much did we give last year, Peggy? Remember?
No, I don't write off.
Appropriate it anyway.
Jan probably remembers.
Yeah, you gave the, you gave five percent last year and I think mine, that I get for my library is like thirteen, a little over maybe. Can't remember with the new one.
I know.
I just wrote that up last, last week too for, but I think it was a little over that for, then Gilmore City and Laverne, you know, are split with the other.
Do you know what the state cut?
Yeah. They, they haven't really said yet what they're gonna cut the libraries. They just said that, you know, in small-town libraries don't get as much as the really big ones. But we never got a whole lot of money anyway, at my library, from, from the state. You know, we might've got a thousand. It, it varied every year, depending on how much money the state library got from the government. So you never really knew each year how much they were gonna give us.
Okay.
Do you guys apply for the foundation money?
Depends on if we need something. They like for, not necessarily for books or anything, you know, they want you to come and do other remodeling or if you need it for.
Yeah, or technology and stuff.
Yeah, technology and things.
That means December seventh, you have to go to be eligible.
Right, right.
Go there and get a form to fill out.
Mm-hmm. But it is, you know, we do, we do appreciate everything, so try to keep us going with books.
It's a gathering place for the community also, isn't it?
Yes, yes, yeah. Mine is, yeah. I have a lot of.
I know a lot of them are.
Library, or, you know, you're there for whatever. Small towns kinda come together when lots of things happen, you know, health, everything, you know. And then I do check out quite a few, mine mostly books. I still have book readers.
Oh, that's good.
So I, I check out quite a few books.
Yeah, I think we've had a slight discussion similar with the library funding.
Uh-huh.
And you're spot on, it's not as much going on in the small towns.
Right.
You know, in our county and most others.
Yeah.
And libraries are really important. I mean, it's a very worthwhile cause. They do a lot of, probably more good now in the community than they did years ago when there was more things going on there. So, yeah, it's very important. I think we definitely wanna keep funding them to the, you know, to the most of our ability.
Yeah, and we appreciate that. So we wanna keep, we wanna keep our libraries going, you know, with technology the way it's going.
Yeah, it's hard keeping up.
It is, you know, and computers and then just everything.
Do you have computers in your library?
Yes.
You could probably get some of those foundation grants.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Yeah, that, that.
We just got two new computers last year, so I think we're pretty good with our, our computers. But in my little town, mostly everybody has a computer.
Yeah.
But there are a few. So, but I have all my stuff on computers.
Okay. It's interesting you mention libraries and we did, Jan, that people do still read books.
Yes.
I know some of these, you know, small libraries.
Yes.
They have work clubs.
Yeah.
And it's a big thing. It's a, it's an activity for people in and around those small communities.
I have one daycare in town and she comes and gets kids books quite a bit. And I've, I've been seeing a few more young adults coming in and getting books instead of, which I like 'cause I'm not real big for computer technology stuff. I'd rather sit and read a book.
Yeah, just have something holding in your hand to turn the pages.
Yes, yeah, and I like that. And, but I do check out a lot of adult books.
That's good.
And interlibrary loan-ums to other libraries too, so, yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Okay.
We'll take your requests under consideration.
All right.
Budget time and.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jan, and you too.
Yep, bye.
Bye.
Okay, Kathy, would you like to come up? We have Kathy Erickson and Allison Hauser with CSS Western Quadrant Supervisor.
Two for the price of one.
Good morning. I just wanted to come to the board today really to introduce Allison Hauser, who as a part of, I think the last time I was here, we talked about County Social Services reorganization into quadrants. And Allison was selected as the supervisor for the Western Quadrant, which includes the western.
Webster, Humboldt, Wright, Pocahontas, Emmett, and the two, five, six counties.
So you'll be seeing her come in and going and I wanted to make sure the board, board was aware of Allison's role and having to meet with her.
For bringing her by.
Yeah, yeah.
Kathy, don't you have a little bit bigger job now too?
Well, yeah, we're, as a part of the restructuring, I can let Allison address, you know, some of the different things that they're working to do and, and, yeah, my role. They're still, still working out my role, so.
So what, what happened with our twenty-two county reorganization was that on the Western Quadrant, as those six counties that I identified, I have that administrative responsibility for the mental health and developmental disability. In that role, what we have done is we have taken previous directors of mental health and identified them as specialist positions. So, for example, Wright County, we have our Justice Coordinator, which is Jen Sheehan. So her role is to work in, with the jails and the sheriff's department and with Juvenile Court Services. Donna Nielsen, who came out of Cassoot County, role is Family Support Specialist, so she's all schools and DHS. We have Sarah Feldman, Judy Tangen, who are Service Coordinators, one's out of Emmett County and one's out of Webster County. And then we have Brittany Baker, who is our Housing Specialist to cover the area. And then Kathy's role is the Western County Mental Health Advocate now. So our, our goal is based on what's called the Senate File 504. What happened down at the legislative level is that in the past, taxpayer dollars for mental health were able to be utilized kind of as the county saw, you know, as that determined. And now they identified us, we had these 504 meetings, which Carl had attended, which identified what are our needs and what are our gaps and what do we need to spend that money on? And it was justice, children, and housing. So that is kinda where our pivot project came out of in our region. And that's kinda how, how everything has landed, so this is all a new role for us.
So one of the ads that they're running on the radio for, one of the governor, people that are seeking the governor's office is, deals with mental health. Do we have our place, our, what, if something happens in Humboldt, are we, you know, do we know where we go with people? Do we have the ability to?
And, and that's the intent. Prior to that, so I've had the opportunity to go and meet over with administrative level up to school, because it was identified that there was some, you know, additional issues with substance abuse and mental health. So Sensa and I have connected a community and family resource to come up. And we're gonna be doing an overall group for parents and also we're meeting with the teachers in January and then looking at maybe doing something with the students in assembly to address those issues directly in Humboldt County, since there has been identified need.
So we have, we're trying to line up the floor?
Yep, preventative, preventative. It's kind of been our role.
I think that.
We're also doing quite a bit with our Justice Coordinator. She's gonna be going on maternity leave now here for three months, but, so we're gonna try to fill in those gaps, but where we'll be making sure that we have telehealth in the jail system and having somebody that works with these individuals once they are released, not just, you know, meeting their needs while they're in jail, but also working with them in the community to transition out, have employment, get, you know, get their medication filled, see somebody and follow up. Those are some of the key things that we're working on.
It'll continue to be a work in progress. Basically what County Social Services is trying to do are to base those things off a strength-based case management model, so, so that there's really, you know, definite pathways that, that individuals are taking when they're working with folks. You know, we still have, I think, good coverage in our, in our office. D C is there, still performing roles related to case management and mental health and definitely is a good, good source, you know, when people call, knowing where they need to, need to go and to be connected. And we have had, I believe, when I was here the other time, I said with two staff, you know, being in the office, it would be difficult to assure that we were covered, a full-time office. And there had been days, certainly as I discussed, that we have had, you know, closures, never for entire day, but.
Propagation.
Post to sign you up for a few hours at a time. And we haven't had any complaints or insurance in regard to that. It seemed to work okay and we do the best we can to have, have somebody there as often as we can, so.
Well, I'm, being on that board, I was hoping that you were gonna say the CFR, because that's one of the main reasons why they're trying to put that project, I shouldn't say trying to put it together, the dirt is being moved and, and the building process is started, so it'll be a huge asset for the, this area, so.
We currently still like CFR right now for our crisis stabilization, but so I probably have, we probably have a direct contact with them at least every couple of days with individuals in this area that are placed there for crisis stabilization.
Good.
I think those quadrants came about in a twenty-two county area, went four different ways, six counties to a quadrant, so they get better services. In fact, they don't even have board meetings now monthly, they, or, they go every other month with quadrant versus school board. So it's getting down to grassroots level. It's gonna work.
And that was really the intent, because what, you know, what may benefit or what might be more important over the western side might not be what they really wanna focus on over in the Waterloo area. It's just, you know, totally different.
Yeah, it's pretty widespread.
Absolutely. So that was the, you're right, Carl, the intent of the quadrants and really working this out. It's just, it'll be an evolving process, that won't happen overnight, it will definitely, but it's kind of where it's at now, so I wanted to come back down, 'cause we talked about getting back down here and start to the board when they started rolling forward, so.
But that, you know, you all touched on all this, but I mean, there's been a lot of changes. And I'm Allison and you kept us up to speed and these guys are a little involved in some of the boards. So is it, you kinda touched on it, it's, it's moving forward with the changes pretty well? You don't see any gaps, lapses, something that you, if you had a wish list, that it would, this would be different?
I don't know if we're deep enough into it to really say. I mean, I don't know, Allison might feel differently, but I think it's just we have just, you know, finally transitioned out of the Medicaid-targeted case management, you know, with the end of the contractual agreement with the MCO, so we're just, you know, finalizing some of that. The billing component will still go on and on for a while, I'm sure, so, so we're really just.
I just have a concern, hopefully that, you said, there's a couple, you mentioned glitches, but not anything terrifically, a big issue yet, there, hopefully there won't be and it all moves forward and, like Bruce said, everybody gets the help and services that they need.
Yeah, especially within the mental health side. Our Western Quadrant is probably the strongest. I unfortunately had to lay three people off out of Western County, where the other counties were actually short, you know, very short when they implemented this and were waiting to hire additional staff. So we've always had staff here, so we're kind of, kind of setting that trend ahead of the game with getting in, into all these positions. So I feel we're pretty strong. The only, the only piece I would say that might be a barrier and that's completely different now is the case management, which you guys might hear about in the news with AmeriHealth dissolving that contract with the state. And there's gonna be individuals that don't have assigned case managers that we originally used to provide services for. If that's not anything on our level, then we can try to fill those gaps with some county, some county funding during that timeframe. But we do also still have two full-time case managers in the twenty-two county quadrant. There are head case managers. I'm still the case manager administrator for that program. That was my prior role before implementing into this new position. And so we have Deborah Schmier out of Webster County and Carolyn Edgar out of Syracuse, and so they cover actually twenty-six counties for case management. We have seventy-three cases still.
Little windshield.
Lot of, a big area.
Seventy-three cases, yeah.
It's a big area for enough people. That's kinda one of my thoughts.
Right, and so their caseloads are definitely manageable and it's just wanting to keep, you know, keep ourselves basically accredited under Chapter twenty-four, keep our foot in the door in case there's some changes down in the legislative level where we have that opportunity again, so.
Do you have a, where's your base office out of, I mean?
I'm out of Webster, but I'm actually a Humboldt County taxpayer, so I'm from Humboldt here. I'm probably maybe five minutes away and then I also have a residence in Rennwick, Iowa, so, so I'm right here. So I'm very, yeah, I'm probably, I'm probably in this office more than I am most and then I ventured over to Pocahontas quite a few times. I think I'll go a couple times in Wright County. It'll be a little, Wright County a little bit more when we have somebody on maternity leave, I'll have to.
Yeah, I have to fill in.
I'll have to get over there a little bit more, so.
Okay, all righty.
Well, we appreciate it and we welcome you.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, let's drop down here and do our committee reports, unless you wanna step into the dog kennel. Oh, okay, all righty.
Hi, Denise.
Well, Dave, I'll let you take care of this, 'cause you handled it for us.
Dean isn't here, he's in training for three days in Des Moines this week. And he asked me to take care of it. We've talked to, I believe, Donna. Gruger has talked to John on this.
Okay.
To get an agreement rolled out, so we can sign it by all parties. The agreement is that we will rent or the dog kennels on Denise's property a hundred dollars a month and pay the utility bill for that little shed. There's a separate meter on it for the heat. And she will let us know what that is and we will pay that. And I haven't talked to Travis yet to get it split with the ca, the city, but I think they need to make handle it there and down to this. Looks real good. We've started cleaning on it. They think, you know, we gotta clean the outside. I think Dean went after a bunch of material and he was gonna help clean up on the inside, power, power wash, clean all the kennels up. We gotta do some painting and fix them so they can, the dogs can get up off the floor and we can start utilizing. There is a little bit of plumbing needs done or wiring needs done, but we'll take care of that. Got everything going on it anyway. Right now it's a verbal agreement, but Denise has said we could go in there and start working on it.
Yep. My eyes, you guys already have the building.
Okay.
So for plumbing, it's just basically the, the hot water heater. The guys that we had hired to do that did it wrong. So that's just gotta be redone. As for wiring, I really don't think there's any wiring to be done.
It's just the water heater.
It's just that, yeah, and there's, there's wiring there. And then mid, mid, Midland will hook it up for us. And that's where I got the hot water heater. And it's gotta guarantee, lifetime guarantee, as long as you call them during the week if something happens, so.
Okay.
We, we will be out there, I'll probably be out there sometime either today or tomorrow and take a look at some of it and see where we're at.
Well, you guys know where the door is, just go ahead and, and do what you gotta do. You're not gonna bother me one bit.
So is there, I mean, is there gonna be an umbrella insurance policy over that? Is how, do we know how that's gonna work?
We're checking in. Did you check into that?
I, I called my insurance agent.
Okay.
He's also, gentlemen, I'm gonna tell ya, kinda looking at it to buy.
Okay.
Unless somebody else wanted to buy the acreage. But I've already chatted with him and he's in agreeance to go ahead and continue renting to you guys for a certain length of time.
Yeah, so we can find something more permanent.
Yeah, yeah.
It'll be a temporary fix for us and we'll, we will get with you. I think Dean's working on that.
Your question was liability.
The insurance on, the liability on it. We talked a little bit on it and he was supposed to check into it a little more.
Better, that's good.
And I'll get a hold of my insurance agent in that, so.
Well, I just wanna protect you and, 'cause once animals come on there, then someone doesn't get bit or.
Yeah.
Who's covered it? Volunteers out there, fall down or?
Animals and or people.
Yeah. We hope people aren't biting each other, but we get to that point.
Well, I'm not saying biting each other, but.
I understand.
Well, I don't bite that hard.
No, you don't bite.
No, I don't bite that hard.
Now, we're not concerned about you.
I don't say that.
Well, and your nibbler.
We'll, we'll get, we'll get everything straightened out on it and when Dean gets back Wednesday, we'll follow up a little more. In the meantime, I will talk with Travis and get the city involved in it too.
Well, this is due to a lot of volunteer help from a lot of people in the community.
Lot of volunteer help and marriage.
We're great together to find a solution for a problem.
Yes, and thank you to everybody from Mary Hansen, who's animal control person, to her friends, to Denise, and to her friends, and it's a very cooperative effort to get, yeah, it is a temporary solution to an ongoing problem and we appreciate everyone that's involved to, to help out with it.
Let me extend a, you guys can come out anytime and look around. You're more than welcome to. You may be handed a rag to, you know, to clean.
Probably a rake to clean the kennels or something.
We'll just keep sending Dave out there till I talk, taking care of.
My great Dane kinda likes him.
Well, thanks again to everyone.
Thanks, Denise.
We'll, we'll be in touch with you.
Okay, I'll stop by and talk to Lee as I leave.
Okay.
Was there any other questions?
I don't think so. I think Dean will be back Thursday and I'll talk with him and if we have anything else.
Did he explain to you about the heat pump?
Yes, yes.
That, that, that's what that meter is for.
Right.
And then the other electricity runs through my house. I'm all electric except for the shop, that's got propane and it's really pretty inexpensive to run.
Yeah, it is. And USD lady was obviously at it, obviously.
She gave us our blessing, her blessing, and said that she wouldn't see us till next year.
Great.
As long as we follow through with what we, she talked about, so that's what we're doing.
I mean, that could be the January one.
Well, it could be. I think she meant a year lapped in the air.
Yeah, she'll be around next summer sometimes.
And I could say, stop there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
All right, well, we will probably go into drainage, 'cause it's right at that.
Make a motion to go to drainage.
Second.
First and second, go into drainage, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Well, that was a good thing with the dog.
Yeah, because this time of year, it's hard to, and expensive to try to build anything. Yeah, because this time of year it's hard to, and expensive to try to build anything.
Oh, you don't want to build anything this time of year. They had a visit, good visit with Mary, you know, our animal control person. And, you know, we had some discussion. We've already discussed some of the potential options for a more permanent shelter, if you will. And I was kind of, we'll have to see where that shakes out, but she said there's a lot of people that are very supportive of such a thing. You know, obviously the people out there cleaning this up now. As far as even fundraising, because there's a lot of animal lovers, to put it simply.
Well, one of the ladies from the Humane Society I ran into at the grocery store the other day and she said her recommendation was is we need to make sure that as kids are involved, you know, those kennels have to be cleaned daily. And she said the biggest thing, issue she can see is they'll get a group of kids from the high school that will say, well, we'll do it over Thanksgiving or we'll do it over Christmas. And all of a sudden, well, there's something that went on that night and they forgot that we were going to do it Friday of Thanksgiving weekend. And, well, they just blow it off. Well, if someone walks through the doors and those kennels haven't been cleaned.
I got a.
Or in jeopardy of, which is a good point.
They need holds down before and then when she gets a dog out there, they've got to be holds down.
Yeah, they have to clean in between.
And that's what she said. So she said, we just want to have a mix of older, more reliable and the young because the young can be taught.
David's, I said, all I said about Dave, he did a good job getting kids to do something. Mary's, you might be kind of a strict disciplinarian, which is what you need to look after and make sure that stuff gets retained. So that's good.
But she's conscious of it, so she's well aware.
She is. And another thing, like Dave has mentioned, how many dollars did you get from Almost Home per year?
Well, they pay, we're paying them thirty-seven hundred.
Have the ability to take animals out.
Yeah, and they're not taking them, so we got to.
Right, so if you take that, thirty-seven hundred dollars, they're at the start.
This bill, okay. I'll put them here.
Put them in one of our files?
Eric, did I put pay estimates on the back of yours?
Very bad.
Try the very back, yeah.
Pay estimate? I mean.
No.
Did you leave them on your?
Here's a day to desk.
These are all just. I never, I never assign the ones to Jacobson Westergaard. No, I don't see anything really pay estimate.
She had them. I know she had them.
You didn't have them in your file, did you, Dave?
No, I think my damn days were filed.
Bruce probably just often paid them.
Oh. I don't see them in mine. She left them out there.
All right, we're all here. We're in drainage. Stacked up my stuff. First, we have E2 lateral M, approved pay estimate number two to Holland contract. Do we find that one?
I don't have a copy for that.
I got it here. They would pay us an amount of a hundred and four thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and ninety-four cents. The completion part of this is a hundred percent? Yeah, they're finished out there.
One oh four, what was that again, right?
Six seventy-nine.
One oh four, six seventy-nine.
That's that.
Yeah, ninety-four. They went out and there was a wet spot. I didn't hear what they found in it at that spot yet, but they were digging that up last week.
They'd been done for.
A while, yeah.
They were doing that lateral off to the, what, northwest?
Yep. All they had to do was do this repair work. They think they might have missed a tile hookup or something. That spot stayed wet, so they went back out last week. Like I say, I haven't heard what they found.
I mean, it looks a level. The day that I drove out there, I drove by it first. I'm thinking that they must not be over the hill yet and then I come back, I thought, well, there it is in the ditch. And I found it. It looks really nice.
Yeah, they did a good job. We're happy anytime they get one of our contracts. Yeah, have the egg wells been actually physically closed? I have not seen certificates on it, so I don't know. Yeah. Egg well closures, seven thousand dollars. Okay, I didn't remember we had it on there. Yeah, they're closed. We need to get certificates from them to give to Mike Borland is what we need to do.
So do we make the motion that we pay that without withholding that until we get a certificate? Or how do you want?
We're not paying the retainage yet, I don't think, are we? So we've got that. Well, that's retainage of ten percent, one thousand. No. Okay, so I think retainage is more than enough. The way I look at it, we're not paying the retainage yet. True. And what we'll do then, we also included the final one that has the retainage payment, but that doesn't get paid until after the completion hearing and that'll be plenty of time to get those certificates. And the retainage is over twenty-five thousand dollars.
Either that or after the meeting, we just call them, can we call up them and ask them, are the wells closed? And we're expecting the certificate. Wouldn't that work?
That'd work. I mean, we've got twenty-five thousand to hold them over the barrel, but yes, that'd be great to follow up with that right away. That was just my question because I seen that we had the bill for the closure and I didn't know if we had the certificates, so. Nope, do not have.
Well, we make the payment.
Where do you get the certificates? Who's to provide?
The well company that closes it. It has to be a certified well driller that closes these, yeah.
So that come direct, who does that go to? County, engineer?
Comes to us and then it goes to Des Moines, right?
Yeah, we have to have the certificate to get the money, right?
So they send that to the drainage district?
Often it comes to us first, but it doesn't happen.
You don't have it?
No, no, they haven't done it yet.
Yeah, we do want to get that right away.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the one oh four, six seventy-nine, ninety-four to Holland pay estimate number two with the withholding of the ten percent.
Second Bruce's motion.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, you have pay estimate number three here, but we're probably not going to do that one. I would say not, no.
That holds for.
Yeah. Did we recommend scheduling completion hearing in the letter? Usually we do with the final. Yes, we are recommending that a completion hearing be scheduled following the completion hearing. Final payment of pay estimate number three can be made and that's the twenty-five thousand, five ninety-six.
Does that have a date number that we have to completion?
Let's just hold, excuse me, what was that?
Do you have, do we have to have so many days on that or what?
Yeah.
We could at least get it on the number.
Twenty, yes, twenty days. Here's what I'd recommend. Let's, I'll make the calls on this and wait and approve that next week and set the completion hearing because I don't think it's on the agenda as far as setting a completion hearing. Have to do it today anyway. So let's just do all that next week.
No, but we can at least line up. It would be like the first week in January if it's only twenty days, so we. She can at least.
But do we pay this retainage until the completion?
Just the past of it, too.
Just two.
Okay, so we set the date. Set the date a week from today, twenty days out or whatever the legality is and then that's it. Is that how we're doing this?
Yeah, and I'd set it twenty days from next week when you approve the pay estimate.
Right.
Makes sense?
Well, we could, yeah, next week. The following week could be the.
There's almost into January.
January first weekend.
But the reality, all the stuff, the waiting and the completion, that shouldn't be real big.
No, there's nothing controversial about this. It's the formality of getting.
I agree with Bruce. Get it on the agenda, get it scheduled and get it done.
You said that next week coming in the motion.
She can look at her schedule and make sure that her.
They're D B eleven on the eight.
Yep, so five of eleven on the eight, continuation of the hearing.
Well, we're going to be in drainage then, we know.
Yeah.
Does that work for you there, ma'am? You think? We can't tell on a head nod on video.
Yeah, I wish every contractor was like Holland as far as working with. We changed the intake size and they were very reasonable on the cost. Just, yeah, just very easygoing. Small problems, they just kind of wave it off and do it. So they're just really good.
They do good work and they expedite their work as well.
Yes. Okay. Let's take care. Now we'll drop down to D B six, making tile, approved pay estimate number six, Nelson Peterson.
That's the one over by Thor, north of Thor.
See, we made it through the road.
Yes.
Yeah, they got through the road. Must be all hooked up and.
Yes, yes. So everything, yeah, they hit a rough spot of about a thousand feet west of that road where there was a lot of sand to deal with, but they got through it. Again, a great contractor to work with. They used a little extra rock, but they didn't get carried away. They dig and then they'd leave it for a day or two to try and drain and come back and kept at it and the way they went again, so.
That outside of the road crossing, but I mean, they're underneath the road. Is that essentially done?
Yes. When I talked to them last week, all they had to do, they were pouring some concrete in the last two structures they placed around the openings and they were doing that last week. I haven't been out there to check it, but I'm sure if they said they were doing it, we did it. We'll be out there.
From what I saw, it didn't look like we have a whole bunch of extra pipe like some of the other.
No, evidently the guys unloading the pipe did a nice job.
Yeah, a couple of pieces laying there.
Yeah, there wasn't a lot.
The one over one twenty-five, we've chased pipe around for almost a year trying to get it moved off the job site.
Yeah.
Looks like they were to the east of that, where they crossed the road there. They're tiling already in the field.
Oh, I believe it. I haven't been out there for.
They're tiling in that field that they crossed.
I'm not surprised. I mean, that was a wet hole out there.
Oh, yes.
Now they got a great outlet. They're paying for it. Some of those parcels over there are approaching two thousand an acre.
But that's the way it should be.
Yes, yes, that's right. That's right. They kind of took the breath away of the landowner when he asked what the cost was, but he's a land investor. I mean, he owns land all over, so. He didn't object. He just kind of.
Okay, so.
So what's your total there, Rick?
We have a pay estimate of fifty-three thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty-six cents. That's number five and it's a hundred percent complete. So I would look for a motion to pay that.
I'll make a motion.
At first.
You can make it. I'll second Dave's motion.
Eric, any more discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
We'll probably do the same thing, come back with the final with the retainage recommended payment so you can accept it and set a completion date for that one.
So back up to the Holland one, that is a hundred percent other than the twenty?
Other than the retainage.
Retainage.
Yeah, there's.
Now, this one will be a hundred percent other than the retainage. The retainage on this will be a little higher because it's a higher cost project.
Does that mean?
They have a total over here somewhere, eighty-five thousand.
Yeah.
And we do the same next week then, setting the date? Do we have a point of?
Yes, I would say so. I'll verify that they got that concrete poured, but yeah.
The other, when they had to dig for a day and then let it sit, that's one of the benefits of having them close by. You know, even someone like Holland would, you know, when you're driving a hundred miles one way to dig for a while and they're just down the road, so.
Good points. Very good point.
Good for them.
Yeah. What else do you have for us today to visit about? The Opheim field crossing. Scott Peterson, Nelson Peterson, I'm glad you looked at it. He said he thought it might take four full days just because you have to move a lot of dirt and had to be careful. He did not have four or five days to spare at all. I had Rich Peterson, Peterson contract, I can't remember what his title is of the company, but. Yeah, anyway, Rick and Travis Peterson. Rick looked at it. He's concerned that he can't get it out. He can't even roll it to the side without destroying it. The pipe has collapsed some in the middle. Instead of a regular factory band, they just used a piece of metal, it looked like, when they installed it. So he's concerned to getting it apart, moving it out. He'd rather not even try it. I hate this, but I wonder if we don't need to just let the Opheims have Lund do it in the spring. I mean, it's been like this for thirty years, twenty or thirty years. I wish we could get it out of there, but the only way to get it out of there probably is to destroy the pipe and that could. I think that's going to happen anyway, but I'd rather it was Opheim's contractor that did it.
I thought the landowner wanted it anyway.
Yeah, yeah. Well, he's hoping he can just lower the pipe. Yeah, what he wants to do is dig on the side of it. He'd have to dig those. Yeah, but just kind of roll it to the side, not up, not rolled up. Just roll it off the side, dig it deeper and roll it lower. Yes, yes. You need two excavators there because you have to excavate on both sides. Yeah, and you can't get back across once you've excavated, so.
The good thing is, is if Lund does it, he promised he'd be first on his list for spring.
Yes.
The weather like this, maybe we could only hope that they would find an opportunity to get to it yet sometime in early winter like we've had, but we can't guarantee that. So I guess we're kind of between a rock and a hard place. We told him last week that if that's the best we can do, that's the best we can do. We'd like it out, but if you can save the money on the pipe.
Yeah, can't blame him.
We don't want to, you know, if that thing drops in the middle.
Did he mention, though, given the fact that it may just collapse when you, you know, just destroy itself or not be usable? And he was still also the one that was waiting to say, okay, what's the actual diameter and all that to know if he.
No, I think that's, that's a Rasmussen.
But Opheim, so on the flip side of that, I can't remember, it was John Opheim, correct?
Yeah.
If he, because if that's a good idea, if that would work, you know, and can't blame him like we all agree for cost savings, but what if that pipe just is, he's going to have.
They roll it, it breaks.
He's going to have to have one to get it back in, which obviously is going to delay the whole.
Yeah, but the one thing is, is if it does break, it'll be open. They'll have it out of.
It'll be open and that's up to them, of course, to get.
Yeah.
And that's where he said last week that if he has to. They'd take, they'd taken the fence out and the neighbor would custom fire that little chunk on the one side to get it planted in case they had to do it next spring.
But here's an engineering question. So, yes, we all agree it'd be nice and I think even the landowner would like to be, have this done now if it was possible, but it's not working out. What is the concern of the impediment of the drainage with that thing in there, you know, come, you know, high water levels next spring?
The only thing in your favor is that the bottom foot that it's restricting isn't that much capacity. You know, compared to more as you get deeper, taking more water. It's going to be better than it was before the cleanout, even with the restriction. So they've, it's repaired to the point it's going to help significantly. I'd much rather have the pipe out.
Certainly. And, you know, no one's saying that they aren't, to the best of their ability, working to get this accomplished, but when you say do anything in the spring in a drainage ditch, that may be July. You just aren't going to be able to go in there with real high water levels and no matter what you're doing. So you may have to consider that this is going to get, that's why I asked about it. Yes, it, ditch otherwise, the cleanout's been done, you have the structure, the discussion, you know, how big a concern is that?
I would say that we've probably gained a foot in depth there just from the cleanout, even with the restriction. So it's significantly better than it was previous to the cleanout, even with this foot restriction in it. So I don't like it, but it's probably the best choice we have right now, let Lund do it. And like Bruce said, he's promised to keep him on the, first on the list and it sounds like they've worked, Lund has worked for him before, so they've got a working relationship already.
I think the only.
And they have a contingency plan if it's banked full for three months.
Is to remind him that if it has, if he's going to buy one of those tanks like Rasmessens are, Jim says it's three, four weeks to get it. So if it collapsed today, you're looking at January, if he ordered it today. But the other part of that is they're just going to roll it in and cover it once the flow or once the.
Yeah, once they get it dug out proper grade.
Grade or I guess.
Now, I got a, just a question. Why don't they just dig along the one side down?
No, I got a, just a question. Why don't they just dig along the one side down to the right depth and just, then it's open?
Let it bypass it?
Then they'll let it bypass it, and then when they do have the-
That's deep enough, you're going to be, you're digging quite a hole.
Would we have, would we have an issue probably?
I think so, because you're digging quite a hole there to get that. You know, you'd have to dig out ten feet and then slope it up, so you'd be out there thirty feet probably from the ditch.
Okay.
Not a bad thought, but-
Causes a ton of erosion or something. Then we got a lot of siltation filled in the ditch.
That would, that would get us the flow line we need and get the, get us through spring, but I'm just afraid of the hole and what it'd take for the backfill and-
Is that why as a contractor you're saying, you pound nails and we'll dig holes? Because we'd dig it out and say, oh, there's no problem, other than with the high water, we're going to wash-
Wash it out, you'd get a lot of siltation.
That sounded like a great plan to me, too, but I never thought that it would city road that much. How far up does that go beyond where that thing's located? Is that, I don't even know where the location is.
As far as the downstream area?
Yeah, from up, I mean, quite a ways up there, so it could have a huge volume.
Oh, yeah, there's another, probably four miles a ditch above it.
Or theoretically upstream, so above it.
There's a lot of four mile, yeah, probably at least four miles.
Wow.
Yeah, that's a long one.
So, you would have, if we had just a moderate spring, you could end up with a lot of-
Water going.
Water going through there, and right now, we're all hoping that we get some moisture to put back in.
Yeah, everything's fairly low right now.
It's very seldom do we have a drought in the spring.
That's why John wished, you know, said I'd like to get it done, but I-
But you never know what this weather will do. Maybe it won't freeze hard solid.
Yeah, if we get through the next, this next week, who knows, yeah.
Yeah, they're talking low.
And you got to be realistic. Do anything drainage related in the spring is very, very questionable.
We always end up with a short window in the spring when we can do the, the work, but, and not be interrupting the planting.
Well, I guess it's the fact that they all are chomping at the bit to get their finer runner, so.
Yep, exactly. And it ends up with quite a short window.
So, no one has illusions of grandeur, and I don't think John does. He has a contingency plan to get to the other side of the ditch where the crossing is, because it just, uh, it may happen. I mean, it'll get resolved, but it, it may be the middle of the summer next year before it happens.
And one other thing, we, as a county, have a pipe that's too high also. It's getting replaced next summer.
That's right.
Because we can't tear it up this winter and get it done, so.
Right, same type of thing, but it's, it will get done.
Working towards the-
The discussion has been there. Rick answered a question that it, yes, the ditch cleanout's all done, and it isn't going to really drastically impede the flow of the drainage.
True, that's right.
And he also mentioned, yes, we all wish it was done right now.
Absolutely.
I think we're about as good as we can be, given the circumstances.
Yes, I would say so.
Alrighty, anything else?
Well, I have, um, I visited with Jim Rasmussen on Saturday.
I just didn't play that for me to read.
And he, he's still waiting to come up with some type of agreement so that he knows what size pipe to order.
Okay, yeah.
Well, he doesn't order eight, I don't remember what the, the sizes were, but he said that until I get the notice or till I get it on paper from the county that this size pipe will work, this thickness will work, the elevation is going to be here. He said, I really can't order it just for the simple fact that I don't know that that pipe is the one that you guys are happy with. So, I, this is what I told him. When we're done here, we'll call you.
Sure.
So, we'll get him on the phone and tell him that, that this diameter is what is required. Do we know it?
I told him what it was. I didn't bring that file, um, and here's the only issue. We're having trouble finding, well, the, the people with the railroad cars have nothing for strength. They don't have any, any references, anything. Um, the, and we've checked several structural places on what to do about this, and they can't really tell us much. So, um, I've seen these go in before. I'll look at the thicknesses this afternoon again. And nobody wants to do the calculations necessary without a contract. So, I should talk to him about the difference in price and the thicknesses, because we'll probably, it's probably worth stepping up, up one size just to have a factor of safety, so.
Well, there's no support from them, right?
No. That's where the backfill is the critical part on those. It's, it's like any, like plastic pipe. I mean, these aren't flexible, but they bend some, so the-
You want to get the side walls packed.
There you go. Exactly. That's what we want to stress.
You know, this is very-
When we did them out here on that road where we put in three pipes, they had, they had the little packer down there and packed the crap out of them in between them.
On the side.
Yeah.
This is curious, because they've been doing this for a number of years. They've had these tanker car things available. And I'm not saying that, you know, you can't find just a nice graph or chart to, to look at size and thickness and strength, but, man, these things have been installed all over the country. You know, that's, that's their advertisement. They got full ones, they got half ones, they show, you know what they're-
Oh, yeah.
So, there's got to be some, something.
I believe what they stress is the backfill. That's what we will stress, is the backfill, because you could have it twice as thick, and if you don't backfill it right, it's still going to collapse.
Right.
So, um, I'll look at the sizes, uh, and we'll stress the compaction, and we can call them before we leave here, but I'll have to confirm the size with him this afternoon.
That's fine, as long as, but he just said it's three to four weeks, so if I call them whatever day, it's three to four weeks, or the thing's going to hit the ground here, but I, he says before I spend X amount of dollars, I want to make sure that that pipe coming from Houston or wherever it's coming from, uh, is the right size, it's the right thickness, it's the right, it's all going to feed, meet the bill.
Yep.
So, I can only, I guess I agree with him that I wouldn't want to put that kind of money in it and not know that it was the one that the county says, yep, we're good with that pipe, so.
And in any, anything we send him, we will emphasize the compaction, uh, as being critical, so.
Well, we'll do it.
Yeah. Let's, let's take care of everything except by confirming the size right after the meeting.
That works.
Okay. Okay. Trish, you got some things for us?
Um, I have a bill from Brian Stelmeyer on D D thirty-three, branch C.
Okay.
And it's just a crop damage.
From what? From that project?
Yeah.
That's a little late, isn't it?
Yeah, thanks for-
Unfortunately, that's late, too late. We've got our completion hearing.
That's what, okay.
I don't know what we can do.
What?
Well, I don't even know what it's-
Yeah, I don't even know what, what it-
I got that, I was like, oh, damn.
Says thirteen point seven acres. Road, that's it. Road, road and tile line?
This is a road, A W D A, well, drainage tile line, or is it and, road and tile line?
Road and tile line.
Road, he could be tugging the path he took in and out.
I was going to say that.
Okay.
That could be.
Grove or road?
R O E D.
It says, it looks like road. And planted beans, six, one, seventeen. Harvested beans, ten, twenty-four, seventeen. So, it planted late. Beans are eighteen bushel roughly, eighteen point two. Uh, figured it nine dollars a bushel, you know? They just gave the average yield for the rest of the farm for corn. That, that part was corn, and they figured that's a per acre. So, he's looking at- He got total losses of almost seven thousand dollars, sixty-eight hundred dollars off of thirteen acres.
On D D thirty-three?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yeah.
Curious word.
I'm assuming this must be the Williams, the seafarm for Williams.
I'm going to guess he, I don't know, I don't know where this is at.
Well, that's what I was looking up.
Or is it the Lowe, on the Lowe's ground? Because they, didn't they drive in on Lowe's ground on the, the, you know?
It's Lowe's.
Is it off one hundred and ninetieth?
I got some numbers at me, I got to look at my flat book.
And here's the curve, so.
You say that dated, dated to six-
Yeah.
In two thousand sixteen?
I didn't get to see.
It just says it's-
Well, I wonder if he does Ragsburger.
He planted, planted on June first of seventeen.
Okay.
And then whoever-
Olson's in top, well, it must be Ragsburger.
I was going to say it's either Ragsburger or I wonder if he does Larry Erickson. When was that submitted?
This last week.
It's number here, what, what's that?
That's the project number that I F G assigned to it.
Okay.
Well-
We'd give them a heart attack.
Hundred ninetieth street would be north of that? Was there any work done there? I don't believe so, that I've seen.
North of one ninetieth, yeah.
It's all on one ninetieth, north of one ninetieth. That's where Virgil's is, right on one ninetieth, on the curve.
Yeah, but that's all south. That's why I said all-
Well, he has to be a tenant of one of those people over there.
Okay, I guess I could see the date.
Yeah, it wasn't, I don't know when it was taken.
Oh, I brought it in, in the office, so you don't know.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Well, it says, oh, that's a different number, that, that's something different.
Well, how can, how did this not get turned in earlier?
I don't know.
Because we addressed, okay, I got a little confused. Yes, you're right, it is north of thirty.
All the letters were sent out, right?
Yep, it was just turned in the thirtieth, but yeah, everything was sent out.
Well, yeah, that would potentially have a argument, but everyone else, we went through the crop damage.
And I don't know, does this cover, does the appraiser's report cover this area anyway, or is this outside of, or? You know, because we did have a, the discussion on any other damages. Nobody writing this for us now, no?
I know, we had the, um-
Well, we should find out exactly where it's at before we go into what the- I'm, I'm guessing he must farm along the dredged ditch there for the Lowe's, you know?
They do farm that Dwayne Lowell trust ground.
Oh, they do?
Yes.
Okay, so that's probably where it's at, because that's where they drove in along that-
Okay.
That ditch with, that's where they hold their pipe in, brought all their equipment in.
But it begs the question, they would have received-
The notice also.
Yeah, but it's to the trust farm, it would have went to Larry, or the Dwayne Lowe's, maybe he didn't get-
The landowners received the notice, not the tenants.
Yeah.
And the tenants have no-
That's what I'm saying, he might not have got it for, and if you aren't reading the paper, know that the completion hearing is-
The payment, payment on any damages is to the landowner, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
So, they have to have, it's between the landowner and the tenant as the agreement, but any damage payments go to the landowner, not to the tenant. Am I correct on that?
Yeah. Crop damage.
Yeah, there's been a problem sometimes.
That's, that's a problem.
Can I see the bill?
Yes, but not the tenants.
Okay, so it would fall upon the-
The tenants should possibly notice that the landowner, but they don't get sent the notice either, so.
But it'd be a communication between the tenant, landowner. Obviously, the tenant would be the one that would realize any damages, you know, driving on it, all the, whatever, we know, that they're out there. The landowner's going to receive the notice, file any damage, and then the money would be paid to the landowner, and as per drainage district code, law, everything else, it actually means that's the way it is, it'd be up to the landowner, tenant to take that damage money and disperse it how they feel. Yes. Am I saying this correctly? Yes. Because the tenants have no, as far as drainage district goes, it's landowners that have-
The right.
The right. You know, with all the voiding, everything else that goes along the drainage district, they also are the ones that receive the crop damage.
Yep. That's absolutely right.
So, I mean, it's understandable, it's a bit confusing, but-
Sure. Well, we'll, uh, maybe have a conversation with the drainage attorney and see what they say. But that means a considerable sum of money.
Yeah.
I can understand why, yeah, it would be frustrating for him, but that, that really are-
But, but also, you start opening up that, it just opens yourself up for a few, oh, that was two years ago. I forgot to get this in, here's my claim.
Because unless there was something missed in legality-
Yeah, unless we did get something-
That someone didn't get a notice as per required, then it's, you know-
Landlord, tenant problem.
It does, it's that communication, tenant, landlord.
Just make sure the Lowe's got their notice.
Not to be, you know, not to-
I'm sure he did.
Everybody's been since that and- But he also reported that Ron Thompson had a filter strip on thirty-three when that was done. Was it thirty-three A or something like that? It's been a long time ago. That has not been reseeded, so.
That's off of two hundred?
Yeah.
And then Harold Olson, there was a stretch of the road there, there's a ditch, the road ditch was cleaned out by Secondary Roads, and it has not been reseeded. And I don't know if that's customary to redo that anyway.
Typically, they don't seed ditches when they clean them. They just let mother nature-
We talked about it last week.
Because the ditch is already full, grassy.
Where are we talking?
Uh, whenever we clean road ditches, do we seed them?
Uh, we try to.
Oh, you do try to seed some of them?
Yeah. It, it doesn't always happen right after. Usually, when we go through the work of seeding, we wait until we've got a list of them.
Then you don't seed a fair lot of them.
Right.
Who seeds them?
We do.
By how?
Uh, hydrocedar sometimes. Um, if it's a small enough area, we've got basically just the bags with rollers or just hand crank it out, um.
But you do reseed?
Yeah, it's the same thing that we do when we have a box colder project. We try to drag the ground first and then, and then seed it.
Yeah, so it was on, what was the address? Section twenty-one?
Yeah, Grove.
Of Grove.
That's over there by Thompson Farm where they piled the dirt when they done that box colder. That's what he wanted reseeded last year, this past summer. Did you get that done? Yeah. Okay, we went back out, uh, after it was first reported, we went back out and hand seeded that.
Okay.
So, these are actually two separate, but it's all two out of the project, so. The one issue is resolved, that was seeded.
Yeah. It was, it was seeded at, uh, after the project was done, but I think what it was is when they sprayed that field, I think they oversprayed the, the new grass seed that was establishing, and it just nuked it.
But two separate issues. This one we're dealing, it's the drainage thing. It has nothing to do with your seeding. So, yeah, I guess we'll have to look into it, but I mean, I'm going to jump to the-
I mean, like I said-
It was a lack of communication.
Yeah.
It was a lack of communication, because this should have been brought forward when we addressed all the other ones.
Yeah.
Is the newest?
So, I make sure I'm on the right page, because you know darn well, you could get a call on us.
Oh, probably will. But we got to follow along.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Yeah, I do-
Oh, goodness.
She's just full of goodness.
Joint bill from Pocahontas. We've got a joint district with them at one seventy-one. And Gary Atherton, I think he works for Secondary Roads is the deal, and he has put in time on doing the, the engineering on something, so they have sent us a bill for his time.
For our portion?
Mm-hmm.
What did they, what did they actually do, in a nutshell?
Don't we only work on the west, east side of the county, so we don't deal with Pocahontas this year, next year? Just send them that mess, see if that came from there.
I really don't know what was done specifically, but.
How, how much is it?
Um, twenty-four hundred.
No.
For our portion of engineering, no, I can't believe this is engineering.
That's the total.
Oh, okay.
And then.
Of the project.
Oh, I just be curious, I mean, did they fix the culvert, did they, what did they do?
I think it was.
Looks like it's a clean out, because there's a lot of dollars there.
Yeah, I can't remember what.
Wouldn't have.
Because what's the total down at the bottom there?
Of his stuff?
Yeah.
Well, twenty-four thousand eight, eighty-seven. That's his, between all of the districts in Pokie and.
Oh, I see.
The joint ones, this is just his hours.
Oh, yes.
Does that take care of, uh, labor, construction, everything, is that just the, must be just.
Or is this his, just his engineering costs?
Okay, it's engineering.
This is just his engineering costs on, uh. One seventy, what's that?
One seventy-one, yeah.
One seventy-one, and we have a small portion of one seventy-one in our county.
Where, where's that located? Is that around C forty-nine, or where is it?
Northwest. Order. Um, what is it? I'm thinking it was in the northwest, but it might be more down towards Gilmore, I'm not sure, but it's not on this map. Or is it, might be over there too.
It's District one seventy-one?
It's one I don't hardly ever deal with.
Yeah, that's what they call it. J T one, I'm assuming.
Joint?
Joint.
Oklahoma County one seventy-one, it should be on there, shouldn't it?
Yeah.
Well, however, you can see, it sounds like the one that's just north of Gilmore.
Is it that one?
Just north. So that's the one where the, their, their crap program is in?
Is that the one where they didn't bring the land in until the project was done, and then you'd pay for future maintenance, the original construction?
Road, where I saw.
I don't think so.
I don't think so either.
I think this one actually might be on the south, in Weaver, where there's a blank there. I think it might be right in here.
Right in there, that area there.
Because I'm trying to remember the landowner.
There's a ditch there just to the east, or west.
Yeah, it might be that.
That's entirely possible. This is ditch clean out, and this is engineering cost on a ditch clean out?
I think it was just a repair.
Repairs.
Repairs?
Yeah, I think it was a clean out.
Like, that area would make sense.
I think that's where it was.
I think it's not this number, like, paying the bill mustn't know what it's for.
Yeah, you know what it's for, because it's really.
And I can.
Just ask him.
Well, it's, it's not that bad if it was twenty-four dollars, but.
Yeah, I think the last time we paid him was quite a bit less than that. But.
Well, my, if, that's, my conservative, if that's just engineering cost, are we gonna get another bill for construction cost?
Well, the landowner's given. And this is for a secondary roads portion, right, or what is that?
For.
If it all goes into the drainage district, the joint.
The engineering fee, the engineering, for him to do his engineering, yeah.
Okay.
I'd just like to know specifically what they get.
Just check it out, get a little more information, I can send it if you find out.
Okay.
It'd be like to be up around one hundred tenth, one hundred twentieth street, there's a district here that we're sharing Pocahontas.
Right.
Right?
And I sent you guys the, did you give us some data since?
Yeah, email.
Yeah.
Then I had a call from Russ Nave down.
That's just north. Obviously, it's over here.
Um.
So that's north, yeah.
Two, two issues. He doesn't believe that in D D one twenty-five, that they have acres in it, along with right, that it goes the other way.
Yeah. Yeah. It'd be right up in there.
You know, we've had eighteen, um, meetings, no written completion, and now they're writing.
I don't know.
I don't know.
What would be is, uh, Weaver.
Do you know where these acres are at, Rick?
I.
I mean, I all got his note.
Right between there and, um, Dave's has a fence line too.
Let's look at this, but I think I know where they're talking about, and water, it's unusual where it kind of runs east, and then north, and then follows waterway, and then comes into where the ag well was. But it gets there.
There was a little, somewhere by the cemetery.
Yeah.
Up in that, southeast, northeast, either.
Yeah, I'm quite sure it's.
It'll be up by the, or the block house.
Five, so I'm wondering.
Behind it in there.
Yeah.
So it's gonna be right here, yeah.
All right, well, let's check this out.
He also had a proposal for a repair, in Rutland, it's on, um, D D thirty-five branch G. It's real, real shallow, he said it's only like six to ten inches deep.
Oh, my.
And there's five blowouts right now. What can we do? Do we fix, spend the money and fix it, do we run plastic, is there something we can do to remedy that?
The tile, is that shallow?
This is D D thirty-five, north of Rutland.
It's, um.
Right, right, right.
It's like twenty-four, I think, twenty-four. And it, it's on the very west side, or east side of twenty-four, and then it joins up with Grove on the other side.
What district is that?
Thirty-five Branch G.
Oh, okay.
And say again, the overall concern?
There's five blowouts on the line right now, it's really, really shallow, six to ten, eleven inches, he said. Um, he wondered if we could do something different than just repair them, because of the expense of repairing them, is it?
Like, move it out into higher, higher ground, so it's.
If there is, or put in plastic, or, he's the tenant, I think he might, he owns that there. But, um, he says it does carry a lot of water. So, what do you do when you have five blowouts, and it's really shallow, and?
Well, it's like we said, one option is you can reroute it a little bit, and get a little more cover over it.
Okay.
But that doesn't do the low ground any good necessarily, uh, it'd help.
No, but every time he goes over it, he's, if it's that shallow, he's just continuing to break it.
Yeah.
So.
Who was, the note, who'd you get the note from?
Russ Nave.
Russ Nave?
Yeah.
We put in reinforced concrete, and then put grass over the top of it to encourage them to stay awesome.
Yeah, don't farm over them.
Yeah.
I'm trying to think where, you said it's on the east side of twenty-four?
Yeah, right along here, and then it cuts over to here, Boswell's tab.
Some CRP out there?
Mm-hmm. So it may be.
Yeah, I, I know the area, but I don't know it real well.
Right.
And rerouting it, to get some cover on it, would technically not be considered an improvement, because you're not improving the capacity, so.
It'll consider the repairs.
There you go, so you wouldn't raise all these red flags, yeah.
No, but unless you're gonna do like you said, and put grass over it, you really don't wanna spend any money repairing it every year, doing, having it repaired up.
When you, when you reroute it, you go through deeper grounds, so you get more dirt over the top, the tile's the same height, you just go out further.
Yes.
If, if that's an option.
That's an option.
I'll tell you what, in all fairness, if it's Russ Nave that reported this, I'll give him a call, this is, sounds like just a matter of physically looking at it.
Well, look at it.
Physically looking at it with these options, you know, I mean, you can usually see, I mean, he's a la, he's the landowner, correct, Trish? So, I mean, he owns it and farms it, so.
Yeah.
They have the concern, and you take a look at it, and with the options of, if it is, yeah, maybe without, I mean, you can't go half a mile away, but if it's.
No, but you, my concern is, is he, if he's the owner and the person that does the work, he's gonna be conscious of it, but if he has someone else do the work. You know, someone else is running a machine and tears it up every year, we aren't gonna do it every year.
No, no, he would.
Can't afford to do that.
Realize that, and I, we've.
Yeah, just wanna take a look at it.
I'll look at it, and that's just, you know, that's what people want, to just have it addressed, and Rick's absolutely right, there are certain instances you can't move it, I mean, there's just not.
Not the cover.
And there again, not a drainage expert nor engineer, but some of those places, it is applicable to put cover, waterway, and you just stay away from it.
Well, these are ones that we wanna give him Trish's cell number.
That's okay.
Yeah.
But that, that should be, should be a workable solution.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Should be a workable solution.
Now, you got any more things in your envelope?
I think that's for you. I'm gonna tell you, drainage meeting Friday, that the other drainage clerks and I went over quite a few things. Um, trying to clarify code possibly on, um, levies, on the timeframe, and how many payments, and kind of unclear and very vague. Um, we talked about remonstrance again, and how many, how you count landowners.
Yeah, that presentation was pretty good about that.
Yeah, and the, of course, you know, each engineer, or each attorney.
Each lawyer, each lawyer has a different version.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The more lawyers you have in the room, the more versions you get.
And it becomes complicated when you have remainderments, and life use, and different things like that. So, who has a valid ownership or interest in it?
Yeah.
So, it's just one thing we were talking about. Um, the petition thing, we beat to death, and of course, I didn't get the answer I wanted.
I didn't get the answer I wanted either.
What was, what were you beating to death?
Um, if you accept a bond as a petition, and we were gonna talk to Chip that was there, but he left too soon for us.
Oh.
And say, you know, is there a way to change this, because I could see why you would want a bond, even though it's not on the establishment, it's on an improvement or whatever.
Yeah.
Because.
It gets spending.
It does.
Way more than the original cost.
And the problem is, every time you put a petition in, you go out and spend a bunch of money foolishly sometimes.
Correct, yeah.
And I just don't, he kept coming back to the fact, well, that's up to your supervisors, I said, well, you know, it'd be kinda nice to have so, a back, just to say. You need a bond, if you're gonna, if you feel worthy enough to submit the petition, that you'll back it with X amount of money.
Yeah.
If it doesn't go through, it doesn't come back to you.
You gotta agree with that.
It pays you.
But if it goes through, they get your bond back, correct?
Right.
Friday, they all said, the only time you need a bond is when you.
I know, but read it.
Big ass establishment, new district.
But, I agree, Rick, hit the nail on the head, you can get a lot of frivolous stuff going on, I won't reference anything we've recently been through, and the, that does go back to the drainage district.
Yeah, that costs.
It does cost, you just mentioned that.
I don't, I just think it's a good practice, and I could, well, I said, can we do, uh, oh, an ordinance or something? Well, no, not really, because it's law, I'm like.
Yeah, you can't have an ordinance to supersede the law, so.
Can't we change?
I have a thought, and you mentioned, you know, there's all sorts of drainage attorneys, and there is certain things, and even though it's law code, it's been there, doesn't really change. Some things do give you, the trustees, some latitude, and is this one of them? Is this something that you look at, wanna make sure, you know, that it is, if we would.
Yeah, they told me, they said, it's your decision.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, it's the ordinance comes in.
Whether, whether you accept petitions, and you get a full engineering report for every petition you receive.
Right, so we have that, but you, I was talking about if, uh.
The bond part?
Yeah, I did, don't know for sure on that one.
Well.
Right now, it says no, you don't need one.
They say, no, you don't need one.
I talked to, we talked to Doug, and then there was another gentleman there, I can't remember, he's relatively new in there, and he was an attorney, and then, of course, had some, so. I disagree.
I, I know you disagree, but, but.
You disagree with not having a bond?
Yeah.
Well, then how about what you learned, that a petition is submitted, you don't have to move forward with it?
No, you don't, it's, it's our decision, but the attorney did advise, he says, I'd advise you to.
Then it gets us right back in the next.
But I said, it's not coming out of your pocket, is it? He says, no.
Then it gets you right back to Trish's concern, why there's not a bond for the petition.
Uh-huh, it's a vicious circle.
It's real vicious, but.
That was just one of our biggest arguments.
So it's not really resolved?
No.
The attorneys say you only need a bond for.
Establishment.
Establishment.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, but we did, you know, it can be approached by the legislature, and he said, have your board approach them on this, and have it changed, have it reworded, or restructured so you can.
But in order to do that, it'd be, it isn't like you could change that in a year, could you?
Hmm, no.
I mean, it, they can't change.
Well, that's.
Times that fast, or laws.
Over in that drainage law is mandated from the state, statewide, so.
They do, they do ten years of study on something like that.
Oh, yeah, but you know, and you always say, talk to your legislators, that's definitely a topic of conversation, amongst other things that have come up this past year, to visit with them about, so.
It's a good.
All right, well, we could pile this for a long time.
Yeah, but that's good stuff.
I have one sh- short thing.
Yeah.
Um, Peterson did, cleaned out sub five of eleven open ditch, and they opened up a lot of tile outlets in doing that, so that's gonna help the situation. But ditch eleven, that it drains into, has about a half mile, it's bad, I talked to you at one time, there was, someone thought that Marshall already had the go ahead to do that.
Yeah.
But there's no work order, is there?
Not on that. It's for a.
He seems to have the thought that there was, because he had done work up to that point, in that general area, and stopped per the, and late in the year, whenever, it's been a year or so ago. And the landowner said, well, I'd like to do such and such, and he said, well, that's fine, we're gonna stop, but then we're gonna continue this short stretch after that, but we checked on this a while back, there's no existing work order.
The only thing I have is for Carson in that area of outlet repair, I think it is.
Yeah.
And that's the only work order I have.
So I just, I'd like to get it resolved, so somebody's on it, lined up to do it.
For the spring, or?
Probably, because it, the ditch bottom's probably gonna freeze in the next couple of weeks.
Well, Rick, that, they absolutely were, I think we all are, and that's one of those snafu things, and then it allows to, and that's a, you're talking a fairly short stretch at this point.
Right, half a mile maybe.
Right, that's sitting there impeding, because upstream was cleaned out already.
Yes, yes, so just, we just need to resolve it, whether we get together with Doug and see if he objects, if someone else goes ahead with it, or.
Well, let's get that.
Well, he ought to be able to provide a work order, if he totally had a work order, right? If she said there's no work order, then I don't understand how there could be a work order.
Right.
I just, yeah, I don't see one.
That's my thought too, but, yeah.
Well.
I mean.
We're gonna get to the bond.
We recommend Doug for a lot of things, and I don't think he'd be offended if we had somebody else do this half mile, but I'd be willing to talk to him.
Yeah, sort it out.
Okay.
Is Peterson still out there, or has he moved on?
Yeah, he's still there, he was gonna wait and see what, if there was a decision made as far as that on eleven, because he's only about half a mile from it.
Well, is this a possibility of just getting this done then?
There's a possibility, yeah.
We get after this, like, right now, and get it resolved.
Yeah.
And if it can be, if he's there, let's get it done.
I'll call Doug before I leave.
Yeah, call Doug, see if it ain't stepping on his toes, because we can't find the work order for it, tell him that.
Yep.
Yep.
All right.
We done?
I think so.
Put a motion out of drainage.
First, second, all in favor?
All right.
Yep, Ben.
Sorry, Ben, this is Trish's call.
I'll take a short break, I feel that's a little light worship.
There you go, yeah, I thought it was later than Christmas time, so.
From years of experience.
Very good.
Every night.
Very good.
So, we were, we were running quite a while ahead there for early, and then.
Yeah, we're doing pretty good. Well, we're not too bad, only fifteen minutes behind. Would it work better if we put you more towards the front of the meeting as a rule, like at eight forty-five?
I suppose it, usually, it just depends on what we've got for the agenda that's, and I, I forgot, I mean, I was running around doing everything else, and they called me on Thursday, and they're like, do you have anything for the agenda? So, I was one of the last ones to show up here to give the.
The thing is, a lot of times, when we go out forty days, we get stuff booked at nine o'clock.
Yeah.
'Cause we never know what we're gonna have on the agenda, and you hate to book stuff.
But unfortunately, with him playing the dual position, I don't want him sitting in here for an hour and a half when he.
You guys, you guys are fine.
Okay.
I'll make it work.
Yeah, I didn't know if you needed a shout.
People last night, or how'd it go yesterday?
I was at night, there was a Christmas, well, I was at St. Lucie this morning, so I was all around trying to find out.
So, you had some people to help you in this?
Very busy, and. Well, I guess go from church programs, and then, hey, let's come up and see Christmas land, or whatever.
Another Christmas card. The mail just keeps coming in.
Good. No, I didn't touch that.
That's what I was gonna check.
That's two Christmas cards, one from the floor.
Yeah, Karen was there, and we wasn't, but yeah, just kind of.
Few people there.
Yes, we did.
All right, everybody's back, nope, Carl still left, all right, we're not back, no, I forgot to give these to, I have more of these.
You sign, and you sign, and you sign.
Well, let's get a bit of a.
Yeah, Ben, Carl isn't here.
Rick, were you planning at all at going to the, I would say, Association of Supervisors meeting in Charles City?
Oh, I talked to Carl about that, uh, yeah.
Okay, then we'll get a check right now for you, 'cause we weren't able to do one, 'cause we didn't know if you're void or not.
Yeah.
Is anyone else going to or want to go to the ISAC University School? Which is coming up in January, here's my agenda, to kinda give you an idea of what's going on. You can be thinking about it and let me know, so I can get you.
It's a two-day, two-day event, isn't it?
Yeah, I'll need to get your motel rooms and your registration, so if you're going, I need to know. Carl, this is your invoice for the ISACU, I'll have you sign that, so we can get that paid.
ISAC University's a good review of what we normally do, and they have good motivating speakers there too.
They do, yeah, really good, yeah.
Don't know yet.
Me neither.
Okay, I'll try to check my schedule at home and get back to you on that.
Yep.
Okay, everybody's back here, we're back in general session. We have Ben, we got the twenty seventeen weed commissioners' report to place on file.
To place on file and get signature from you signing off on this, and then we send it down to the Iowa Department of Ag and Land Stewardship. Call them in one day last week, or maybe the week before, and fill this out, typically during the beginning of the calendar year.
Okay, I appreciate that.
But he did us a favor and came in and.
Yeah, 'cause he has his license for that.
Yep.
Okay, and then, um, I'll have to have a motion to it. Get that done.
I didn't move a previous place on file, the weed commissioners' report for two thousand seventeen.
First and second, any more discussion?
This is for all practical intents and purposes, a technicality that goes to the Department of Agriculture.
This is, this is an annual report that the weed commissioner has to fill out.
Right.
Describing what we have for weeds, and what we did for spraying, and this year, we did no spraying.
Right, right.
So, typically, you'd have that amount of gallons of this type of chemical we spray.
Well, it's gonna look a little different next year.
Right, so, I mean, we can wait the discussion for that a later date. Prove this and move forward.
Yes. First and second.
You got them.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That was the other discussion, you got that, so it's good.
I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, proof quote from Chuck, Chuck Britson for box culvert analysis and data entry.
Yeah, this is a quote from Chuck Britson to do some, some structural analysis on the box culverts that we have that are wider than twenty feet long. When you take from the end of one section to the end of the next, so like the two that we did this year, down by Lanes and down on two seventieth, both of those are wider than twenty feet, so those still have to be inspected. And update our, our SIMS record with the Iowa DOT. Most of these, the calculations are already completed, those were done by the manufacturer, with the only one that they have to do the calculations on being, the bottom one, Corinth nineteen thirty thirty, was a late seventies, early eighties, cast in place, double box culvert.
Okay.
So, is this, this does cover the whole, entire county, doesn't it? Yeah, this, this is for the, the four box culverts that we've got that are larger than a twenty-foot open.
Yeah.
What they have to do is, they have to load rate them in the SIMS program, make sure that they don't have to be posted like we do bridges.
But it does cover any in question?
Uh, anything wider than twenty.
Right, this, this is the entire list of the county. Right, okay. I'll make a motion to prove.
Second, first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, the last thing that I've got isn't on the agenda, it's just an FYI, we, uh, we finished redoing the bridge up by Livermore that was hit. I'm not sure if I got X or Y. Last, last week, we finished recreating the portal bracing that was hit by the hog driver. And we had Joe with Chuck Britson come up and inspect, climb up off on top of the bridge, and view the members, and he's basically given it a blessing and told us that we could reopen it. Thursday, we reopened it, should make all the deer hunters happy that it was open for the weekend.
Yeah.
It's still rated three ton.
It's still rated three ton, uh, these weren't the members that forced it to three ton, but these are what we had to replace to open the bridge back up.
Well, I'm glad that you kinda, you know, went through that, did, did what you had to do, and, you know, kept it, like you said, it's cars and pickups, that's what it was at three ton, but it's still a, you know, a great convenience at that. And I think people have been accustomed over the years to that, and it's nice that they're able to maintain it.
Yes.
Good work, and, and doing what you had to do to be able to have your sign off on it to, to open it back up.
The only thing we gotta do now is pull together what we've got for expenses and deliver that to the insurance, the guy's insurance company.
Yeah.
For reimbursement, so.
Good, good work.
And while you're here, Ben, Sue sent over some wording for the mailbox replacement, and I want the board to be aware of that before I put it up for first reading next week. So, here's what she's sent, have you maybe read that to the board and see if you guys are in agreement with, I know you've had discussions with Paul on mailboxes, but I don't know what your decisions were, so.
Okay, um, this is when we made the mailbox change, when we went through all of our policies back in June, I believe. What it changes says, the county will assume no liability for fences damaged because of snow removal unless such action can be determined to be malicious. We struck out the mailboxes from that portion of it, and then we also removed the sentence that says, the county will not replace mailboxes damaged or knocked down by the force of snow thrown from the plow. We did add the note that the county will replace mailboxes damaged during snow removal operations by installing a traditional medium-sized T-two mailbox mounted on a four-by-four nominal wooden post. That was what you guys had discussed during the work session, the language was changed, but I guess we never had a formal reading to change the policy.
Right, did you mention something, and it doesn't have to be written in the policy, a temporary, you know, because if it's frozen, you can't do any.
We haven't constructed them yet, I need to get with Cissna County and run up there and borrow one of their temporaries, I think we're gonna model off of what they've done. While we haven't done that yet.
But I think you did mention that.
Yeah.
Have a, a.
Yeah, we weren't, we weren't gonna put it in the, in the.
No.
Ordinance, but, yeah, we were.
You are gonna, you're working on that available, you're working on that.
Yeah.
That'd be a, a nice gesture to do.
Yeah. I, you know, I think that's a good thing to, you know, do that, and I know there was a lot of discussion, and we talked about it, that it does put back a more agreeable mailbox, if you will, for the lack of a better term, maybe official mailbox. But, you know, I believe there's probably places, hopefully, you know, you hope you don't have too much problem with any of this, that it's gonna be a non-standard mailbox that gets damaged. And, you know, we didn't put in there that there's any, there's no overall monetary compensation, you know, it is taking responsibility and putting back a temporary to a permanent reasonable mailbox, which is good. I just wonder where that's gonna shake out, you know, if there's something that wasn't, and they say, well, I understand, you know, I had a bit of a risk with my two hundred dollar paint job mailbox that got damaged, and what happens then? I mean, that's, that's, I've thought about this since I went through this ordinance thing, you know, they have the option of, yes, they can get a nice mailbox put back, or nothing.
They work themselves.
I mean, that's a risk you take when you put something in, in, in the right of way. It, it, it is a possibility it'll get hit, and that's a gamble you're taking as a, the owner of that mailbox.
I think we had that discussion, that, you know.
If you wanna put a thousand dollars into your mailbox, you're putting that out there at risk, and I don't know if your owning homeowner's insurance covers that or not.
I have no idea, I doubt it.
We sure can't pay for those statues.
No. But, you know, I mean, like I said, not to nitpick this, 'cause I think it's good that, you know, take response, and it's typically if it's just an unfortunate thing, that the plow couldn't get over and it hit it, you know, I'd still argue the snow thing, kinda like the fences, but we'll see how that shakes out, but, yeah, the, you know, person that did have that, and they are assuming the responsibility, they say, well, you know, the neighbor who had the standard mailbox that accidentally got damaged, you know, got that replaced, and I had a more expensive mailbox, which I'm assuming responsibility for, but I got not even fifty dollars to put back towards, you know, putting up another one. That's, just so you're aware, that, that, you know, I know it's really nitpicky, and I don't think it's something that's gonna happen.
I think that we've also accepted the fact that we're doing something as a gesture of showing that we didn't have a, I mean, it wasn't that we were trying to do it, we at least are putting something back for them to use, and I think that's the, the, the common courtesy, if they, they wanna upgrade it to back to their five hundred dollar or their thousand dollar mailbox.
They put our mailbox in their shed if they want to, build their own.
Not arguing that, but, you know, just, I know it's a little nitpickyish, but, and I think it's good that, like Bruce said, you're taking that responsibility if something egregious happens, but just throwing that out, that there's, we have that discussion, there's these higher end, and not saying they're necessarily illegal or anything like that, but the image didn't, you know.
Maybe we worked through that last time.
I hope our.
But, you know, I just wanted to bring up.
We're just revising something we decided a long time ago, if I'm misunderstanding.
I hope our drivers.
Dead horse.
Will do the good thing of notifying you and saying, I just hit a plow, or I just caught the mailbox at Reimer's house, so that we know that it wasn't somebody that ran over it last night, and we haven't even plowed the road yet, and we're gonna get blamed for it, you know what I'm saying?
They, they tried to call in.
Right, and I, I know they do a good job, that's just what we're.
First times that they don't even.
Yeah, they don't, there's snow flying off the blade, they can't see where.
They're looking back.
We'll probably get stuck more times with some of those old junky mailboxes we upgraded for them, we will.
Last year, we had two or three phone calls in over the winter, uh, during the ice storm, where people had actually slid in mailboxes, and they called us thinking that we had gotten the mailboxes.
Lot more of those.
This isn't gonna please everyone, there's guys that have oversized mailboxes, the custom, uh, concrete mailboxes, you know, anywhere from two to a thousand dollars. The reason the ordinance was in place, we started getting, we started seeing bills for five hundred, seven hundred dollar custom painted mailboxes, and our insurance company said, there's no way we're gonna pay this claim.
Right.
And we got out of it, so basically, what we've done is extended an olive branch and said, you know what, we're gonna try and meet you somewhere in between, we hit it, we'll put something back.
So, those.
And like I said, I'm not arguing, that's pretty fair, because you can get into that, I just wanted to.
So, I'll go ahead with this.
Are we, are we in agreement, that's what we were saying, all right.
Okay, I'll be ready for next week then.
Okay.
Did you, maybe I hallucinated this, did you, did you send us an email something about?
I did, I didn't put it on the agenda.
No, but we can visit about it, can't we, the email that he sent us, so that we can at least discuss it and maybe put it on next week's, if you're.
Yeah, and, and that was kinda my intention, uh, back in twenty eleven, we discussed making it a requirement that our secondary road employees, from that point on, would carry and maintain a medical card. It was discussed, and it was decided to add that as part of the job description, so right there on the front page of our job description, it now says that the employee will have a Class A CD, CDL, as well as a medical card, just like a, any other over-the-road trucker would. Since that time, we have, I guess, never followed up and asked these guys if they have them. Came up last week when one of them went in to renew his driver's license and accidentally clicked intrastate instead of interstate. And she said that she didn't see his medical card, well, he didn't have one. We've got five employees that have been hired since that time, I know of one for sure, our most recent, has his because he does weekend hauling. I don't know about the other four, as far as whether or not they have a medical card, or if you guys want to even continue making that a requirement. Discussion back in twenty eleven, when they added that, was who would be responsible for the health inspection, basically, for the medical card, from what I understand, it's.
Seventy-five bucks?
It's about seventy-five to a hundred bucks for an elaborate physical, a urine sample, additional tests, and it's gotta be done a minimum of every two years. They can request every six months, but standard, it sounds like.
If you're on blood pressure medicine.
It's every year.
It's every year, because of the fact that, once you're on blood pressure medicine, they wanna regulate, and they wanna make sure that you're taking medicine. So, if you are on that medicine, it's, you're done every year, once you, if you aren't on the medicine, it's every other year, so it's only a seventy-five dollar fee, but it's a way that the state has kinda made them abide by, if you're on the medicine, we wanna make sure you're doing it every year, so.
Well, Ben, you mentioned from the get-go. Now, Ben, you mentioned from the get-go and in your email, that was that, not that long ago required, and it just kinda lapsed.
Well, it, it, it started in 2011. Like I said, we, as the county, were exempted from actually having to have medical cards. So of the 18 employees, only five of them would have to have a medical card. The others are grandfathered in, and it wasn't a requirement then. Since that time, we've got five new employees that write on their job descriptions that they would-
That they're supposed to have it.
Said that they, they were supposed to have it and have it maintained. The only thing that I found was an email between, I think it was Carl, Jerry, and Paul, that said, discussion on who would be responsible for the payment of, of the physical, before, before we changed the language, I guess.
I think this original discussion came about was that reason, DOT's exempt, the county's been exempt, and the local policy can change it. And we talked about, we maybe need to do that, because a lot of our employees couldn't pass that physical, and they're running up our medical bills, it costs us more in health insurance, and we said, "We'll let those guys stay on, but any new guys we hire, we're gonna require the medical card. Now, we'll have a healthy group, and jury is out on who pays for it. And some companies pay for it, some companies don't pay for it." To me, I think it's a good investment for the county to go ahead and pay for it. It's gonna reduce our insurance. If you get guys employed that can't pass a medical card, you probably don't want them to drive a snow plow either.
And if that's the case, and you wanna make the, the county pay for it, I would say the county will pay for one every two years.
That's right.
And if the guy has-
Issues.
Issues, where he has to have it every six months or every year, the rest of those tests should be on the employee.
I agree with that.
But the county should pay for-
I think so.
One every-
The requirement is every two years?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Makes sense to me.
And I also think anybody who is beyond that, who wants to have a medical card, the county should pay for it. If they wanna go get the physical-
Absolutely.
-to carry a medical card, the county should pay for it.
Good investment.
Because it will benefit us.
Good investment.
Yes.
Good investment.
Yes.
They can't pass that medical card, they shouldn't be employed by the county to drive the vehicle.
That's right. A little scary about the grandfathered-in thing, a little bit.
It is. I, I, I think they all should carry them.
If you, if you wanted to push that, you would have to push that through the union contract.
But I, I think we should offer it to anybody who is, just as an offer, that if they wanna go get their medical card, we should pay for it.
That's extend it to, from the date forward, every two years, and anyone that wants to.
Because it would, it would benefit us.
Have that even less requirement than grandfathered-in. I think that makes good sense.
But I can put that on the agenda for next week, if I actually make that-
Are we in the pool, or are they exempt from the-
We're in the drafting pool, yeah. Uh, we are in the fourth quarter right now. I'm waiting to hear back from Melody, who our lucky winners are.
Right.
But, yeah.
Well, that's just random.
Yeah.
And that's good for us. That helps our insurance.
Why? Cut down your claims. We'll pay that $75 over and over again. That's no problem.
Well, however you have set that, just get it to Peggy, and she'll put you on the agenda for, for me.
Yeah. I think that's a good deal.
Yeah, real good. Dan, thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Peggy, let's see, we've got the committee reports left. Let's get that done.
Okay, for the 28th, I had, I don't know, colleague call from Eagle Grove. We went through most of the information for what, what it takes to be on the, on that board, which was interesting for, you all know who's on the board along with us, so that, Rick was quite entertaining there. Then Friday, on the first, I was down at the Starlight on Iowa Drainage meeting, which, you know, every, I guess this is my third year down there, so that was, sometimes it's like over your head, but I think most of the speakers did a good job at, at their presentation and enjoyed, other than I had a little, I was the one that he talked about, the Iowa State fan that in line, him and a mister, the guy from Pocahontas, he was talking bad about the Iowa State people, and of course, I couldn't keep my mouth shut, so I had to hold the Hawkeye fan to the-
Which, uh-
Well, we just had a small discussion, which he brought up in his presentation, so.
I'd like to wonder about the Indians.
Yeah. But it was, I, I enjoyed it. It was, and I think we, it's well worth our money, and it's too close not to attend, so hopefully, we'll, we get our most bang for our buck out of it.
Very good. On Wednesday evening, we had another hazard mitigation meeting. I think we, as a board, decided we didn't wanna change anything, but we had to go through the litmus and work through that again. So I think we're done with that. Thursday, I spent all day in Des Moines, and we had a Supervisors Exec Council meeting, and basically, we reviewed, and I encourage you guys to look at this, this thing that Peggy just handed out to us, all the upcoming events we have. This gives it for the whole year. One of them would be the ISAC University. It tells you about, if you wonder about dates and schedule things according, you look at this little manual, you don't have conflicts, you down the road, then if you wanna participate. One of the things we did talk about in our meeting, the state of Missouri, you know, think Missouri's background, but backward, but they do have a requirement, requiring every supervisor have so much continual ed and be able to serve. And if you don't get that continual ed, they take $2,000 off your salary. That's what they do in the state of Missouri. Now, you might be going to a drainage clinic, you might be doing different things, you don't have to go to these necessarily. But some guys get elected and just sit at home and never do anything. And that's what they're trying to see if they maybe get a change on. I don't know. That's something we talked about in roundtable, maybe at one of these meetings coming up. But I encourage you to participate in a lot of those things. You learn a lot from the neighbor next to you.
Yes, it's probably more valuable information, Carl.
And they do have some good speakers. Some of them are entertaining, some of them are motivating. We went over the agendas and set up agendas for all those coming events. We have, I think, some good speakers lined up. We're gonna get you out of there on time, and I'm gonna have late meetings like we've had sometimes. So I think it'd be worthy of looking at, uh-
Nets at the Sheridan, right? For that, like, this is the first one in January?
Right.
It's out in the west.
January 17th, 18th is Big Center.
They're off of 50th, isn't it, the Sheridan?
Right there west of Valley West.
Yeah.
Big square building.
North of Lowe's. 'Cause that's where I hang out, is Lowe's.
And then on February 1st-
Yeah, I know that place.
February 1st, we go back to Embassy Suites for the Supervisors Conference. And March 14th, today at the Capitol, which we normally do that, and it's gonna be followed in the next few days for the ISAC conference, if that's auditorium. So there's a lot of good things to partake of. I know you can't go to everything, but we need to partake in many of those. I put on your desk this morning, some of the things we talked about there, ISAC legislative proposal, and the ISAC Committee, Jamie and Lucas, Bill, they'll all be up Charles City Saturday, or Thursday, 13.
Friday.
Friday, whatever day it is. And they'll go over some of the same thing again with us. I think, Rick, you got a letter from ISAC, too, on op- drug abuse.
Opioid.
Opioid. And we talked about it at length, and there's a law firm that's taking this on, and it wouldn't cost us a thing to join with a resolution. Peggy, you got some information on this thing, too. That might be on our agenda a little later on. I think we need to do something. That's an epidemic statewide, worldwide, nationwide, and we could get a resolution. They're not, we're gonna get any money out of them, but maybe we scare them enough to slow down some of it, so.
Didn't we instruct John last week to look that over? When John was in here, didn't we say, "Can you look that over and give us your feedback on that?" I think that was what we-
I think we should. That's, that comes up every meeting we go to anymore, so. Take a look at this, if you look at this and pencil in your calendar, then agree accordingly. If any of you go Thursday, I know sex's going up and Rick's going up, any of the rest of you go up. We got that changed. Years past, we used to meet in the morning, have a roundtables, and then talk about legislation, then we'd go to lunch, and then we'd have legislators come in. We're gonna do all that before lunch this year, eat lunch and come home. So it's gonna be the same thing and condense it down a little bit.
Yeah, 'cause they, they need to hear the complaints.
Right.
That's a good time for them to be there.
There's 22 counties, and we start out with, Chris is making up forms for us, and we have reports from each county of what's happening. Rick, you'll be, I'll be our speaker this year, you can tell about our dogs and the cats.
You've been handing that off to me lately. I don't-
You're a good speaker. That was it for me, and then Friday, went to the Drainage Conference down at Fort Dodge.
What is your tentative leaving time, if I could switch my doctor's plan?
Certainly.
Seven. Seven o'clock.
Okay.
He's ready to come. And Rick Rasmussen might also ride with us.
Oh, well.
He's gonna come, he wants to ride.
I'll reconsider.
No, we meet out here in the parking lot at seven, and, you know, you can drive or I can drive, maybe Derek will take off and go from there.
Well-
Usually snows that day, though.
We're done with that.
Yeah, it's always a miserable day, cold, blowing snow.
Oh, you think you can look forward to that again?
Yeah.
Carl- It's fun in Mason City.
Was your hazard mitigation meeting here in town?
Yes, Monday night at Emergency Management Building.
Okay.
That's it for me. Oh, your date? Okay, 29th, I went down to Region Five Hazmat Meeting, Fort Dodge. We're now paying a dollar and a quarter per capita to them. The gal that's been taking all the paperwork, secretary sort of thing, we've got to buy her contract out because she's retiring, so per capita for the next year will be a dollar and 50 cents per capita. So that's coming, figure it in the budget. They're also looking at another hazmat truck. The one they have is about 20 years old. They was headed for a scene here a couple months ago and blew a tire, had quite a little bit of damage to the truck. They've got new tires on it now. They're looking at spending, trying to raise money for $640,000 for this truck. They said if they budget for it, it would be a buck 90 to two bucks per capita, per county. I believe there's nine counties involved in that. But they're going back, we didn't put it in the budget for next year. We told them that, no, let's see if we can raise the money first, so they're gonna hit all the industries up and businesses that would probably use the hazmat, like the elevators and stuff, and see if they couldn't raise at least half of it. But they, they do need a new truck. The one they've got's undersized.
Was that a dollar 90 on top of the dollar and a quarter?
Just to, it would raise it up to a ninety. About a dollar 91, I think he had figured roughly.
Sure. Pretty good chance of jump.
Yeah. But the, the quarter per capita jump is for buying out Peg's contract from the college. And we're gonna have to find someplace else to meet. And they're talking about moving over to the county, taking it over and hiring a secretary and stuff for theirs, so. But we've gotta buy her out first, so. Anyway, that's coming, buck and a half. The 30th, I had a VA meeting here in town, approved claims and stuff. I think we picked up one new one, and we lost a couple. One passed away, and we'd been helping, and another family moved, so. I also went and looked at the dog set up, talked with the Denise and stuff, and I looked at the driveway out on Worshington. Out there, they were complaining about, they was out cleaning out the ditch, and one farmer's got a driveway that's approximately 120, 130 feet long when he cleaned his ditch, so I told him, "Cut it back," talked to him. Friday, I was at the Drainage Meeting that was on the first. It was very interesting. I enjoyed going to that, and I picked up a lot of information from it, stuff I didn't know. And on Saturday, I was out to the dog set up again for a few minutes to see what was going on there, so that's it for the week.
Well, official meetings like everyone else. Iowa Drainage District Association Conference in Fort Dodge just passed Friday.
That's the only official meeting I had also, in Fort Dodge. I did speak with Dave Menakis. He oversees our landfill out here. Got John Coleman set up to do some seeding where that dirt they filled in on the north side. I think he's gonna get it done, hopefully today, maybe. Got issues with that lagoon, squirt full of water again. They changed the drainage under the landfill two, three years ago, and I really think that's what's causing our problems, you know, they, and it's about $10,000 every time you have to pump that lagoon. We just pumped it last spring, and it's full again.
What they changed on the drainage?
Well, they used, the pipes underneath there used to go into a, they come underneath the landfill, and then they went to a manhole, which they tested the water, and then it ran out of this manhole down to the drainage. You know, it had to be drinking water quality leaving, and it was. We didn't have any problems with it, but they said you can't do that no more, so they capped them lines off. So now I think that subsurface water is coming up-
And going to the-
Going into the leachade lagoon. That's my thoughts. I don't know if it's the truth or not, but-
Definitely slowing that thing up a lot.
Faster than it used to. And I got him talking to this Mike Smith. Years ago, they were allowed to pump the lagoon and spray it back on top of the pile in the summertime, and then let it evaporate, you know, 'cause otherwise it'd go right back into leachade. So he's checking to see if we can do that again, 'cause that would help immensely, 'cause that'd be way, way cheaper to do that.
Definitely.
Yeah, pump running all the time, but-
Yeah.
That worked for years, though.
Yeah, it did. And then, and then he said, "You can't do that." So he's checking to see, 'cause all of our numbers have been good. We haven't, haven't had any spikes and anything, so he's hoping that, maybe we can go back to doing that. And he says, "If that doesn't work," he says, "It might be more beneficial to make the lagoon bigger." That's not cheap either, because now they make you put rubber liners in those things, and so.
But $10,000 every second amount of month, or weeks, a month, depending if they had a lot of moisture.
Depends how much it rains, and we haven't, you know, we had a lot of rain there in October, and that's probably what bumped her up again.
And there's not much hope of going back to the drainage water testing program?
No, 'cause they, they made us go in there and chop them lines off and cap them, and plug the manhole, and so. Regulations.
One correction, that meeting at Charles City is Thursday, not Friday.
I said Friday, yeah.
Okay. See, once you set it out in the parking lot, waiting for us on Friday.
So, we might have to pump it again, maybe.
Well, hopefully, you can work on the spraying it back over the top of the pile.
Yeah, that's what we're hoping for, and if that's the case, maybe we'll try to sneak through the winter and then do it next summer.
Yeah.
How many more years we have to worry about that, okay?
I think it's 12, I think. I don't think-
At 30 years, at 30 years, we had to maintain it. It's been closed probably 15, 16, something.
But the, the simple fact that we're still part of the one down there, so whether it's this one or that one, we'd be paying our share down there, wouldn't we?
Yeah, we're still paying, yeah. We're still paying down there.
When they start closing, so you just jump through hoops from one to the-
But it'd be nice to get this one, get it signed off and closed, and then we don't have to do all this stuff anymore.
Yeah.
'Cause we really have, it's been working well out there. Haven't had any problems to, to speak of.
They can't expedite the sign-off date on it, I'm sure either. Gotta go that length of time.
That's a possibility.
They, when they had, DNR was out there, did their visit this summer, we chatted about things, and it, you know, beans and numbers were looking good.
That's what I'm saying, 'cause they've never had an issue. You said they never had a spike, and-
Yeah, the numbers all look good, so they, they said that was a possibility.
That would be the best-case scenario.
Anyway, that's all I had.
Okay.
You're done with your-
Any other for us?
No more.
Any else from the board?
We had a pretty good discussion on a variety of topics today.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion carries.